Good afternoon. Welcome to the Spring 2019 Prestonstown Hall Meeting. My name is Prabhat Hegela and it is my pleasure to invite to the podium the 18th President of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Dr. Shirley Ann Jackson.
Thank you Provost Hegela. Good afternoon and welcome everyone to the 2019 Springtown Meeting here at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. And I give special greetings to those who are watching remotely or streaming in any way. Now before I sum up the state of the institute, please allow me to introduce the senior leadership team. Provost Prabhat Hegela, of course. Secretary of the Institute and General Counsel, Mr. Craig Cook. Vice President for Institute Advancement, Mr. Greg Easton. Vice President for Finance and Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Barbara Howe. Senior Associate Vice President for Research, Dr. Robert Hull. Vice President for Strategic Communications and External Relations, Ms. Ritchie Hunter. Vice President for Information Services and Technology and Chief Information Officer, Mr. John Kolbe. Vice President for Student Life, Dr. Peter Knewersky. Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics, Dr. Lee McElroy. Vice President for Administration, Mr. Claude Rounds. Vice President for Enrollment Management, Mr. Jonathan Wexler. Also our senior academic leadership, Dean of the Lally School of Management, Dr. Tom Begley. Dean of the School of Science, Dr. Kurt Brenneman. Dean of the School of Architecture, Mr. Evan Douglas. Vice Provost and Dean of Graduate Education, Dr. Stanley Dunn. And the newest member of the senior academic leadership, Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate Education, Dr. Keith Mu Young. Dean of the School of Engineering, Dr. Shaker Gardi. And he may be listening remotely, our Dean of Rensselaer at Hartford, Dr. Eric Kraus. And Dean of the School of Humanities, Arts and Social Sciences, Dr. Mary Simone. And so I want to thank them for all that they do to make Rensselaer transformative in the world and for all that all of you do to make Rensselaer transformative in the world. Now the vision that guides us at Rensselaer, the new polytechnic, and you've heard me speak to this before, comes from the Greek for skilled in many arts. And as the new polytechnic, three key ideas offer a structural underpinning for the decisions we make in terms of Rensselaer, research, pedagogy, and the student experience. First, we are collaborative because truly the greatest opportunities and challenges cannot be addressed by even the most brilliant person working alone. Second, we are multidisciplinary because complex questions demand that we bring together a multiplicity of perspectives. And third, we are focused on the most pressing national and global challenges such as climate change, our need to secure supplies of food, water, and energy sufficient for growing global population, national and global security, our need for sustainable infrastructure, structures and materials, and issues in human health that range from thus far untreatable conditions such as Alzheimer's and autism to chronic conditions such as diabetes and cardiovascular disease to emerging infectious diseases such as Ebola and Zika. And of course, always national and global security. And so at Rensselaer, we take on the hard problems. And to achieve our ambitions, the new polytechnic relies on the most advanced tools and technologies available to support all disciplines and on ensuring that our faculty and students in every discipline benefit simultaneously from deep learning in their fields of endeavor and the opportunity to do work that crosses disciplines. And that is why we have built great strength in data science, which is crucial to almost every creative scholarly or scientific endeavor. And that is why we established the Rensselaer Institute for Data Exploration and Applications, or the Rensselaer IDEA, to help researchers in all disciplines find new insights in data. In education, Professor Kristen Bennett, Associate Director of the Rensselaer IDEA, pioneered an introduction to data mathematics course that teaches undergraduates early in their college careers high-dimensional mathematics and data analytics, offering them powerful tools for investigations in many fields. And at our Data Insight, or I'm going to give a quiz on this, Data Interdisciplinary Challenge Intelligent Technology Exploration Laboratory, our undergraduates use data to address real-world questions such as which genes are regulated by the circadian clock or when in the development of an embryo there is a window of susceptibility for the Zika virus to do the damage that results in microcephaly. Or what are the drivers of high Medicaid spending in pregnancy? Now this latter project, supported by the United Health Foundation and in collaboration with the New York State Department of Health, identified significant regional disparities in care. And now because of all the challenges and opportunities, we have instituted a data dexterity requirement so that all undergraduates at Rensselaer will complete two data-intensive courses. One introductory course in any field that establishes how data can be used to answer important questions within the field and a more in-depth, hands-on, minds-on second course in which students focus on the use of data in their chosen discipline. Now in these courses, students will collect or select, curate, validate, and analyze data sets in their own projects and research. Now we want every Rensselaer graduate in every field to have a sophisticated understanding of different types of data to appreciate the difference between causation and correlation, to know how to visualize complex data in ways that emphasize key mechanisms, and frankly, to think deeply about the ethics of data use. Of course, data science undergirds artificial intelligence and machine learning. And we intend to lead in all fields under this broad umbrella. We already are applying artificial intelligence in partnership with IBM in projects that include our Cognitive and Immersive Systems Laboratory and in Heels, our Center for Health Empowerment by Analytics Learning and Semantics. And now in partnership with IBM, we are creating a broader artificial intelligence research activity which will allow Rensselaer both to forward the science of artificial intelligence and to enable researchers in all five of our schools to use artificial intelligence and machine learning to forward their own investigations, designs, and innovations. We will be hiring faculty experts in artificial intelligence across the disciplines. And we are developing an AI and machine learning academic concentration for our students. And of course, we are investing in the most advanced tools and technologies for research and education in artificial intelligence. Now already in AMUS, our Advanced Micro-Multi Processing Optimized System, we already have one of the most powerful high-performance computers at an American university with a combination of speed and networking capabilities that can address complex data-rich research challenges. But please stay tuned for an announcement about a third-generation supercomputer that will serve as an even more powerful testbed for our artificial intelligence research activity. All of this is part of an institute-wide thrust in data, artificial intelligence, and computation, or DAK for short. Now, an important part of educating our students at the new polytechnic is exposing them to experiences that allow them to apply their growing knowledge outside of Rensselaer before they graduate. And therefore, with the Arch, we have rethought our academic calendar towards that end with a summer here for all rising juniors and then a semester away during the traditional junior year. The summer here is intended to accelerate our students through the academic curriculum with a great deal of personal attention from their professors and from our student life staff while allowing them to experience the cultural and recreational richness in the capital region that is available only in the summer. And then they will be able to leave campus during the away semester and beyond to do something meaningful that will inform their future lives and the decisions they make about their futures. After two pilots of the Arch, we are now ready to have our first full class on campus this coming summer with more than 1,200 students. The academic aspects of the summer semester are fully in place and we are readying our campus physically as well. We have added air conditioning to all nine residence halls and the academic space that we will use for our summer semester. We have expanded the summer's hours of service for the dining options in the Union. And we have expanded the hours of our safe ride service and our shuttle buses. Now to accommodate the increase in enrollment enabled by the Arch, we are renovating and adding 230 seats to the Russell Sage Dining Hall and 210 seats to the Commons Dining Hall. We have in addition expanded the academic capacity of our classrooms, our studios, and teaching labs. And of course, the enlarged staff in our Center for Career and Professional Development are working energetically with the advising hubs in each of our schools to identify the right opportunity for each rising junior. The students already have developed their curriculum vitae or resumes, an important milestone in professional development. And it is one of the many ways that the Arch is giving Rensselaer students the head start they should have. Nearly 240 companies are ready to take Rensselaer juniors on for internships or co-op assignments. Overall, we have identified 1,438 away opportunities thus far. And we are adding between 50 and 75 new opportunities each week, including in research and in public and civic engagements in the arts and in study abroad opportunities. And we believe that the Arch will strengthen the profile of every Rensselaer graduate to come. Now as we focus on national and global challenges here, we also support the community that surrounds us. With nearly 8,000 students, 2,000 employees, and many visitors, our overall economic impact on the capital region is nearly $1 billion a year. We are the largest single taxpayer in Troy. And as a founding member and the major participant in the Troy Redevelopment Foundation, we help to provide continuous planning and financial support for individual projects that contribute to a Troy Renaissance. We also have contributed to the infrastructure of the city of Troy, spending over $7 million in improving areas surrounding the campus, including providing $300,000 for the purchase of police and fire department equipment to support the public safety surfaces of Troy and services, of course, that then are provided to the campus. We have driven $90 million in privatized economic development in the city of Troy, including at City Station, the Proctor's Building, the Chazen Building, and the Gurley Building. We also help enterprises in our region and beyond gain a competitive edge, including one of New York State's most storied companies, Corning. Our Center for Computational Innovations helped Corning to develop a simulation-based engineering system designed to minimize the time and expense of physically prototyping the extrusion process that pushes, blends, cuts, and stretches a special molten glass, transforming it under high temperatures and pressures into the desired product. The slightest variation in this process alters the properties of the glass as well as the energy and manufacturing costs of producing it. In addition to the expertise in high-performance computing of the Center for Computational Innovations Director, Professor Chriska Rothers, Corning was able to avail itself of the expertise in fluid dynamics of Professor Ankar Sani of our Department of Mechanical, Aerospace, and Nuclear Engineering. And we contribute directly to the region as well by educating innovators who found new enterprises here. There's a powerful example in the vibrant video game cluster that has grown up in our midst in recent years. Now Rensselaer truly pioneered education in gaming and the electronic arts, and we remain one of the best places in the country to study them. We are very proud of the success of first playable solutions, I mean productions, excuse me, founded by Dr. Toby Solner of the Rensselaer classes of 1984, 1989, and 1994, and of vicarious visions founded by Kartik Bala of the class of 1997. When Kartik and his brother Guha launched a new experimental gaming company named Veelen Studios two and a half years ago, they did it in Troy, specifically to be close to the talent emanating from Rensselaer. And we expect to continue adding to this gaming cluster. IO Interloper, a "corporate espionage hacking game", developed by a group of recent Rensselaer graduates of our Games and Simulation Arts and Sciences Program, was a finalist for Best Student Game at both the Independent Games Festival and at the E3 College Games Competition. Together, this group has founded an independent game design studio here in Troy, aptly named DANG. Now, our influence is so profound that New York State last year named the Rensselaer gaming hub. In addition to those of NYU and the Rochester Institute of Technology named our hub as a center of excellence. Now we contribute more than economic growth to the region. We contribute our minds, our hands, and our hearts. And I'm very proud to say that in the last year, we raised over $100,000 for the United Way of the Capital Region, supporting those in need among us. We not only strengthen the community around us, we take every opportunity to strengthen our own community, including our historic 165-year-old Greek system. Now I have just received the final report of the Greek Life Task Force, which I created in June of 2018 as part of an overall Greek Life Review Committee to identify what is necessary to enact a long-term, sustainable, and comprehensive culture change in order to preserve our Greek system and its most positive aspects. And I want to thank the Greek Life Task Force chaired by John Kolbe and our executive sponsor group chaired by Special Assistant to the President, Mr. Lenormand Strong, for their leadership of a panoramic effort in which the voices of students, alumni, and alumni, faculty, staff, and administrators were heard. And we were very fortunate to be able to solicit the advice of other university leaders for a guest panel including Dr. Susie Nelson, Dean of Students at MIT, and the leaders of national and international Greek organizations for another guest panel, including the North American Interfraternity Conference and the National Panhellenic Conference. And I congratulate all of those who were involved in any capacity in this effort, including the hundreds of people who commented on the draft report and allowed it to be improved. Now throughout the process, the many conversations initiated by the task force helped all participants to see more clearly the challenges and problems that together we must resolve within the Greek Life community here at Rensselaer. And these problems include falling membership, legal jeopardy, an unacceptable rate of sexual misconduct, and health and safety violations, all of which represent a risk to Rensselaer students. Now at the same time, and this is equally important, this process has underscored that Greek life at its best is a force for citizenship, friendship, and community, qualities we intend to preserve, enhance, and support. Now an example of this is provided by the Mount Ida Community Development Micro Grant Program instituted by the Gamma Tatartan Chapter of Phi Sigma Kappa Fraternity in 2014 to support business and residential improvements in the Congress Street neighborhood, the neighborhood where they opened their new house. And this is an example to be emulated. As you know, the draft report of the task force has been posted online for eight weeks, including a three-week comment period. And we will post the final report shortly. And as soon as the cabinet and I finish our review of the report, we will begin implementation of its recommendations. Now a key focus of the task force report is incorporating class goals and practices into Greek life and mitigating high-risk behaviors. Now a new drug and alcohol policy institute-wide will help us to achieve this latter goal by creating uniformity across our residential system with respect to restrictions on underage drinking since students under age 21, in other words, a large majority of our undergraduates, are not legally permitted to drink. Now when it comes to illegal drugs, our policy is really one of zero tolerance. And therefore, we have significantly strengthened the policies and sanctions around illegal drug use. Now while the new policies, I'm sure, to some may seem stringent, they are meant to enhance the safety of all of our students and to reflect that we are a caring community. Now turning to broader institute matters, our financial results, as you've seen perhaps in a communication from me earlier, in the prior fiscal year were very positive. We had an 18% increase in net assets, an exceptional operating result of over $23 million, which is one of the strongest in our history, and strong cash flows from operations. Now to make strategic investments, because that's what they have been, in the Rensselaer plan and to ensure the health of our legacy-defined benefit pension plan, we had incurred nearly $750 million of long-term debt by 2015. And so in fiscal year 2017, we committed to the crossover, a plan whose key milestone was the equalization of long-term debt and our endowment, which had been exceeded by the debt, by fiscal year 2020. And our excellent financial results allowed us to achieve this crossover well in advance of our target by the end of fiscal year 2018. And in spite of recent market volatility, we remain in solid territory vis-à-vis the crossover. Our stronger balance sheet also allowed us last fall to refinance our debt and lower our interest costs and to more directly and consistently amortize down our debt. So we are well positioned for a wonderful year in fiscal 2020. And to allow us to achieve all aspects of our mission in research, teaching, and student life, on March 9, the Rensselaer Board of Trustees approved an overall operational budget of $454.7 million. Now tuition for full-time undergraduate and full-time graduate students will be $54,000, an increase of 2.8%, which is in line with and below some other colleges and universities. Now on average, room and board rates will increase 2.1%. Now the overall cost of attendance will increase by about 2.5%. But the financial aid budget, on the other hand, will increase 2.6% from the current level to over $160 million. And included in this figure are resources to assist students who encounter unexpected financial hardships during their time at Rensselaer. And I would urge any student who finds him or herself in such a position to reach out to the financial aid office. Now the minimum academic year stipend for graduate students will increase to $23,500 so that we are competitive with our peer institutions. And we will continue adding to our world-class faculty, filling the remaining tenured and tenured-track faculty positions planned in this year's budget, including four constellations, but also five hires in support of the artificial intelligence research initiative. In addition, we will hire teaching fellows and lecturers to maintain instructional quality. And we will continue adding staff as needed to support the Arch. Now we are approaching the halfway point of transformative campaign for global change with over $460 million raised thus far. And I'm pleased to say this support for our mission is very broad-based with over 31,000 individual donors having contributed. Our donors have given and pledged $112 million specifically for student scholarships to help us bridge the gap between the cost of a Rensselaer education and our students' ability to pay. Once again, we anticipate enrolling another class of truly deserving young people with impressive academic and personal accomplishments. And on March 9, we offered admissions to the undergraduate class of 2023. And of the students we accepted, we have increased the number of women offered a place by 3%, the number of underrepresented minorities by 9%, of international students by 8%, and of the number of students from outside the Northeast by 7%. The average SAT score of these students has risen once again above the record-high average of last year. And so we look forward to welcoming this dazzling group of young people to Rensselaer in August. And as we welcome them, and as we who are here continue our important endeavors, given events that have occurred, unfortunate events, in the United States and abroad, it is important to know that I and the full leadership team here take very seriously the safety of the Rensselaer community. And therefore, I want to reemphasize a message sent to the Rensselaer community by Strategic Communications and External Relations on Monday. And as was said in that message, unfortunately, there have been confusing and inaccurate messages propagated on social media about the presence of guns and ammunition on our campus. Now as was indicated in the earlier message, on March 14, Rensselaer was informed by federal law enforcement that a law enforcement that a student was attempting to purchase an assault weapon away from the campus, away from the campus. And with the intervention of law enforcement and our own Public Safety Division, the purchase was prevented. The student was permanently removed from the university and remains in federal custody. But at no time were guns or ammunition on the Rensselaer campus, nor was there any immediate threat to the campus community. And this was confirmed in a search performed by federal law enforcement. Now, we take the safety of our campus very seriously, and we also don't believe in unduly causing panic, because when we do send you a message about an imminent threat, we want you to pay attention to it. And therefore, it is important that inaccurate, erroneous, and frightening information is not spread. And so, I would ask you to call Strategic Communications and External Relations or the Director of Public Safety, Mr. Vadim Thomas, if you have further questions. Now, on a more lighthearted note, let me share one delightful piece of information. Now, during a recent five-day stretch, RPI was the answer three times to clues in the New York Times crossword puzzles. Now, in all, RPI has been used as a clue over, now here's a quiz, how many times, you think? Okay, anybody else? Well, it's right in between, over 80 times in the New York Times crossword puzzles. And I would say that that's proof positive that we have a broad impact, including at breakfast time. And now, as I usually do, I am especially delighted to announce the three people who will be receiving honorary degrees at our 213th Rensselaer commitment. We will honor Dr. Helene Gale, who is President and CEO of the Chicago Community Trust, who most recently, and for a number of years, was President and CEO of CARE Worldwide, which, as you know, is a leading international humanitarian organization. She is an expert on global development and humanitarian and health issues and is a physician and public health specialist herself. We will also honor President and CEO of Albany Medical Center, Mr. James Barber, a transformative leader in the capital region, whose leadership and caring across many fronts have benefited all of us. And we will welcome Dr. John Holdren, the Heinz Professor of Environmental Policy at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government and former Director of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy during the Obama Administration. Dr. Holdren will be our commencement speaker. And I would hope and urge all of you to join us for the president's commencement colloquy on Friday, May 17, in the Impact Concert Hall. As always, it promises to be a fascinating discussion. And now, with that, I'm happy to address your questions. Thank you very much. So, wait, wait for the mic. Yes, here. The gentleman here in the plat.
Is it true that you're opposed to the establishment of any identity or affiliation-based resource center on campus? And regardless of your answer to that question, will there be any change towards the current lack of any official LGBTQ resources on campus?
Well, I don't know what you really mean by a lack of resources for LGBTQ students. It's a focus that the university's had for years. And, you know, long ago, we instituted safe zone training. We have the lavender graduation. There are a number of other things, but I'll ask our Vice President for Student Life, Peter Kniewerski, to speak to that.
Well, good afternoon, and I would, I think, did you ask? I would say if there's something specific, we would love to hear what those specifics are, and I'd be happy to meet with you individually. I think there are a number of additional staff and resources that we've put in place in the last few, even last few months or year. And I think, speaking specifically to the climate issue, what we're trying to do is create a warm, welcoming, and inclusive place in any group. You think about any group that is affiliated with the institute, we want to make sure that they feel welcome, connected, engaged, and there's an affiliation. And if there's resources and support we can provide, that's our goal, is to make sure that every student has that support.
All right. I've done a lot of work on this issue, and from web searches alone, the only LGBTQ resource that is available is from the LGBTQ task force. I and my organization, the Lavender Ambassadors, which also helped host Lavender Graduation, have reached out to them, and they have told us that they are entirely volunteer-based and don't have any, like, and don't have official resources to put forward. So, like, that page of resources that's web-searchable is completely unindexed and is just the result of professors taking time out of their day to work on this project without having anything explicitly dedicated towards it.
Well, I think I would second what Peter said, and I know that we've done some things in the Counseling Center and other places to be supportive. I don't know, Dr. Lawrence, if you have any comments you might wish to make.
I'm just quickly trying to see if the leader of our resources for the LGBTQ community is here, and she's not here today, Tara Schuster, but I would love to put her in contact with this gentleman, I apologize, I don't know your name, and talk about what our plans are for the future. Our plans are to continue to grow what resources we do have. And we are actually in the process of hiring a second health educator at this point in time. We hope we'll be able to devote more time to these issues.
Okay, so in order to give other people a chance to ask their questions, I think we're going to move on. Is there another question? Okay, please.
Good afternoon. First, thank you, Dr. Jackson, for your time here today. I know we all appreciate it. I actually have two questions. They're both related to the alcohol and other drug policy that was sent out earlier today. So, the first question is, currently with the new alcohol and other drugs program, student organizations such as Greek Life, if they want to host certain social events with alcohol, they have to go to a third-party off-campus. Right now, programs such as Safe Ride explicitly prohibit driving students that are expected to be under the influence of alcohol. I was wondering, are there any plans to expand transportation options to these kinds of social events?
Let me let Travis Apgar, Dean of Students, speak to this.
So, we will not, as a Safe Ride, will not transport anybody who's, you know, obviously intoxicated, needs any kind of medical assistance. We'll provide them with and put them in touch with, but we transport folks, you know, from downtown to Pauling Ave, to, you know, all over, all over the Troy area, within a two-mile radius of campus. And, and so, as it relates to Safe Ride, as long as it's within a two-mile radius and that person isn't in some other need of medical attention, we'll certainly provide that sort of transportation.
Wonderful, thank you. And my second question was, there's also a change to the Good Samaritan policy under the alcohol and other drugs policy, saying that students are required to call 911 or Public Safety to obtain assistance for students under the influence of alcohol when that person's well-being and safety is known to be or reasonably should be known to be in jeopardy. I was wondering what definition is RPI using for reasonably should be known to be in jeopardy?
Yeah, I think that when somebody is intoxicated enough that they need help, they can't stand, they're vomiting, they're sick, that, you know, they're not able to kind of control their own actions. Reasonable is the word that we're using because we recognize that one definition, we're going to educate a great deal, but one definition doesn't necessarily apply to everyone. And what we're expecting is that this will actually give people opportunity to be able to say, yes, I need to make a call, that there is no barrier, whether it's peer pressure, whether it's a general understanding or a feeling that they don't know what it is, we'll educate about that. But we certainly want to make sure that we're clearly communicating our position on the importance of getting students help in their time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Aisha Imtias, and I'm the Secretary of the Muslim Student Association Arabika. So, I know you sort of touched base on this already, but I just wanted to ask a more specific question. So, as many of us are aware, there have been many recent events, both on and off-campus, that have raised concerns about the safety of the Muslim community. So, like, for example, the New Zealand mosque shooting that took the lives of 51 Muslims and left countless others in critical condition, or the massacre in Mali. And as for events on campus, there was a Muslim woman who was verbally assaulted in front of the Public Safety Building, and I know you talked about this already, but the student that attempted to purchase an assault rifle. So, in light of these recent events, it's no surprise that the Muslim community is really concerned about their safety. And Muslim women in particular, because of their religious attire, they're disproportionately targeted and discriminated against. So, my question to you is this, what is the university willing to do to ensure the safety and inclusion of Muslim students, faculty, and staff on campus? And my other question is, would you be willing to meet with a representative from the Muslim community to gain a better understanding of their concerns? And the most pressing of the concerns is a need for a prayer space in the library. Thank you.
So, I think, you know, we're always happy to meet with members of any student group. Our focus is on our students and the safety of our students. Now, of course, I was very disturbed by what happened in New Zealand. There are a lot of things that go on in the background from the point of view of being protective of groups that we know have been and are targeted in various ways. You're right, because of attire, many Muslim students, particularly women, can be identified. It's an interesting situation because I think what our concern here is that this is a multicultural community and multiethnic community, and it should be a welcoming and comfortable and safe community. We have had incidents that have happened to Indian students. We have had incidents that have happened to African-American students. We have had incidents that have happened to Chinese students. As you know, we have had synagogues, churches, mosques targeted more broadly. And so, we spend a lot of time tracking and keeping up with intelligence about things, and that informs what we do and how we react. And I do know that our Director of Public Safety intends to institute a program for more active shooter training here, particularly with our students working with the Student Life Division, because it is something important. But we've always, and I've always said, that acts of intolerance and bigotry and hatred will not be tolerated at Rensselaer. And I know that may or may not give you comfort, but I'm happy to meet with our Muslim Students Association. Now, I am aware of the question about prayer space, and that's something that I'm sure our Vice President for Student Life would be happy to engage with you on, but our focus as well is on our student body. And so, there are questions that have arisen about a larger space for a larger community, and I think that's something that has to be discussed. And so, I would invite you to talk with Peter after the meeting. Yes, please.
Hello, Dr. Jackson. Thank you for having us today. We appreciate it. I'm here as a member of the current data structure staff, an undergraduate mentor for the course. And primarily, the reason I'm here is because I've had a number of my fellow students that have expressed, it's not always with some of the assignments, but because we have, given our last test, we had about 500 students in the gradable to handle. And I don't know how the drop numbers have affected that. I heard it wasn't too severe, but we shouldn't be relying on that anyway. My biggest thing is that I feel that the resources a bit for the class, they don't seem to be there, because I understand there's another, I understand that we have a number of other major courses for engineering students and then science students in general. I was in Physics 1 last semester as a CS major, and there was a lot of us there. But I feel that this class is particularly special in the sense that there is a large dependence on office hours and time to interact with both the teaching staff and the undergraduate mentors. And I was just wondering, because it is, it is a good thing to see more and more people getting into CS, and it is a good thing to see the university size grow. And it's very nice to have more and more people, more and more experience, more and more different views around, but I'm just concerned about the future of being able to essentially effectively provide help to these students. Because when I took it last semester, there was about 200 less kids or so, and I know that, you know, while we had, you know, there's always going to be people that wait for a while for help and stuff like that. It just feels that at this current pace, we're not keeping up with the student demand for the course. So, I guess I'd expand this in general. How is RPI looking to essentially handle maybe increased ALAC or increased TA positions for these courses?
Right, well, let me let the Provost speak to this, but you raised an important point.
Yeah, so, thank you for that question. I think there are courses like this. Data Structures is in particular a challenging course in computer science. We hit a lot of problems raised by the students, and as such, I think if you talk to our ALAC staff, almost 40% of the resources are allocated towards data structures, the TLA staff. And clearly, we will try and increase those as the need arises. We want to get more undergraduate mentors into the program because this helps them. Actually, this three-on-one advising really helps in a class like that, as it does for computer programming courses. So, you've raised an important question, and I think the Deans and the department heads raise these issues that then rise to our office through the Dean of Undergraduate Education, and we allocate the resources accordingly. We'll continue to monitor that situation, and certainly, if there are problems, we will address them.
Yeah, and we'll have our new Dean of, Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate Education look into that. And I think it would be good for you to sit with him. He just got here. And, and because if we're making this commitment to data, AI, and computation, we need to be thinking about these things. Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Megan. First and foremost, I'd also like to thank you for your talk today. I have two questions, they're kind of related, but the first being regarding the arch program. Since students will potentially be on campus for up to four semesters straight, what initiatives are being taken to increase the quantity and quality of counseling support available to students, as well as how will these services be more accessible to students? Currently, students are experiencing an immense amount of stress from just two consecutive semesters, so I foresee this being a challenge in the future.
I think Dr. Kniewerski wants to speak to that.
Pointing my way. Well, first of all, thank you for your question, and I will defer to Dr. Lawrence if there are things, but I think, I think in the early remarks, we talked about kind of enhancement of all the services across the campus, and that includes medical and mental health, Safe Rides. So, I think we have instituted a number of new systems, triage and support, additional counselors, taking counseling out into the community. That's really the beauty of the class model, is we don't just stay in one office, we're going out into the residence halls, we're going out into the Greek Commons, and we want to continue to do that and meet the needs of our students and meet the needs of our students really around the clock, because we know whether they're on campus or going on an arch-away opportunity, they might face additional stresses. And we've actually had many conversations just in the last few weeks, how do we make sure that we have all the support and services? So, I think, in answer to your question, we have a number of things we've done, and we will continue to work with both student leaders, like yourself, and our staff to bring up new ideas and new approaches to make sure. The mental health needs, and I want to use this as an opportunity to make an advertisement, the mental health needs on this campus and campuses across the country are growing. The beauty of it is this campus is, we've reduced the stigma, right? So, people are willing to talk about mental health, they're willing to go and seek help, and they're also willing to help each other. And I think the best thing you can do as a student is, when you see another student you're concerned about, let one of us know, walk them to the counseling center, call our dean on duty, alert Public Safety, because ultimately, we want to get them to the support and care they need. and care they need.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawrence, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes. So I just wanted to add that I do apologize. In the past, probably nine months or so, it has been difficult to get into counseling. And that's because we were two counselors short. Since February 25th, the day that our two newest counselors started, any student who is wishing to get access to counseling services has been offered same-day services. We intend for that to continue. So the only students who aren't getting in the same day they want to get in are choosing not to come in that day. As far as quality, I do want to address that as well. We don't hire any counselors unless they are fully licensed and certified, unless they have gone through programs which are highly respected. So there's no counselor in counseling services that is not qualified. So I'm not sure what that part of the question means. I've heard that before, but I'd love to discuss that more, because do we have a counselor that's specifically qualified for every single niche? No. But we have, all of our counselors are qualified, certified. In fact, we have a process where every year, we check to make sure their certifications, licensure, et cetera is up to date. So I just wanted to, I'm not sure what that means, and I'd like you to expound on that more, because from my point of view, all of our counselors are qualified. But anyway, so the really exciting thing is we anticipate this triage, it's really behavioral, primary behavioral mental health is going to continue to grow. We're going to have more counselors in that field. We anticipate that every student will be able to access us on the day they want, when they want. If it's an evening, of course, you can always access us by calling Public Safety. I've had several students ask me just today, "How come I can't get you guys at night?" Actually, you can get us at night. The reason we have you contact Public Safety instead of having a specific counseling number is because we don't want you to have to remember six different numbers. "Oh, this is the one I call for the doctor, this is the one I call for the counselor, this is the one I call if I want to talk to my coach." We want you to have one number, and that's why we have you go through that number. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. And then my second question being, since we are offering more acceptances to underrepresented minorities, what resources that we do not already have are being enacted to support their transition to RPI, as well as to support their development while at RPI?
Well, I think there are three things to be said. One is in the financial aid arena as needed, providing more support there. And we have the Garnet Baltimore Scholars Program that focuses in that way, and we've specifically been doing fundraising to support that. Secondly, we're expanding the Bridge Program. It's not exclusively for underrepresented minority students, but we're seeing to it that every underrepresented student who we feel should be in that program are in it. Third, we're putting into place structures and a process to follow students once they here, to ensure that they get into programs like I-Presist and other support services, but also to support them through the living groups. And we've hired an Assistant Dean for Underrepresented Minority Student Success. Thank you. I'm only going to take one question from each person, so I want you to know that. I mean, I'm only going to call on you one time, but don't try to give me 10 questions, please.
Hi, my name is John Versa. I would just like to bring up something that wasn't addressed in this Town Hall meeting and also wasn't addressed in the Fall Town Hall meeting when I was here, and that's accessibility on campus for physically disabled students. I myself am physically disabled and do have trouble getting around this campus as it stands now. And it's concerning when that isn't brought up at any of these meetings. And I experienced a lot of day-to-day issues and am worried in particular about the ARCH. A lot of the dorms chosen are not accessible. And this, when I asked the Director of the ARCH about this, she seemed to think that they were all accessible, which is not correct. E-complex and North Hall were both on there, and anyone who knows anything about those buildings knows that's wildly inaccurate, that those are accessible buildings. And in addition to that, what the university defines as an accessible building is pretty concerning to me. I was put in Hall Hall last year for my freshman year, and it was technically an accessible room, but laundry was on the bottom floor, and I was able to make it work because of, I'm lucky enough to not be too severely physically disabled, but someone with more limitations than me would have really not had any luck there. And so I was just wondering if there's any plans to lessen this impact on students who have to worry about this.
Well, first, let me thank you for raising that issue, because we are not at all wishing to have it be unduly difficult for students with any kind of disability. But I do want to ask you a question. Did you make it known that you needed particular support when you came?
I did. And I was placed in that room as advertised as an accessible room.
Okay.
And the only ways that it was accessible was there was a ramp to the building, it was on the first floor, and it had an individual restroom or bathroom, but that's all.
Okay. So let me ask Claude to speak to your broader question, and then I'm going to ask Travis to talk about what we might do as a process to make sure that, you know, we don't overlook people's particular needs.
Thank you. To say that we have a challenge from an accessibility, mobility point at Rensselaer, all you had to do is look out the window and look at our topography. So we have a lot of difficult challenges. Each year, we are continuing to focus on some of the known accessibility issues. In fact, we recently went through a very extensive audit by the New York State Department of Education, which documented our compliance in a great many of areas. And so on an ongoing basis, we do investments. I think it's really important from a specific student viewpoint, is that in the Health Center, there is an individual that works with Dr. Lawrence, who is very effective at helping us develop plans to accommodate the very person-specific needs. Because each student who has limitations has different needs. If we become aware of those needs, we do everything we can to develop both a logistics program, which includes where you're assigned in the resident halls, but we also work very carefully to provide academic programming that would be accessible to you. In terms of the ARCH summer housing, yes, we do have several resident halls that do not have full accessibility. However, in the inventory of beds that we have for the ARCH, in the inventory of beds we have all year for the population that we serve in the residential community, there are accessible accommodations. Now, if you discover that what we describe as accessible doesn't quite work for you, you bring that to our attention, and those are the things that we fix every year. Because sometimes even a half-inch differential on the lip of a door could be a problem from an accessibility viewpoint, but it might be a compliance issue from a code perspective.
So let's just make sure that we have a well-known and well-advertised methodology for students to make their concerns known and to have people moved if that needs to happen. Travis, I don't know if you want to say something.
So, John, was it? John, so we have a process, as you know, you've gone through apparently, you know, to identify a room within our residence halls that would be considered accessible, mobility-accessible. But we also want to continue to have conversations with the community to identify, how are we going beyond just kind of the basics? You know, we have a ramp to get you in, you might have an individual bathroom, but how do we, you know, help us think through, how do we address things like laundry, access to the dining halls, you know, those sorts of things? And so, you know, if you just hang out afterward, I'll come up and see you, and let's talk a little bit more, okay?
And I was also wondering, will Commons be closed this summer because of the construction? Is just Sage going to be open? Do we know? Because Sage is also extremely inaccessible in that the only places to eat are down a flight of stairs, and that has presented a really big challenge to me, so.
Okay. Yes, the renovations that Dr. Jackson highlighted, the renovation of the Russell Sage Dining Hall will be completed by May 15th. However, and that will become the primary dining facility during the summer. The Commons Dining Room will be under renovation during the summer and will not be available until August 15th. Now, if, again, if you have difficulty using the Russell Sage Dining Hall, if that's brought to our attention and you work with Travis, we can make arrangements for you to use your meal plan to access other dining facilities on campus, including those that are retail facilities like the Student Union, so.
I just think that's a Band-Aid solution to the fact that-
Yeah, well, I think what's going to happen is, we're not going to be able to make the argument here, so I want to invite you, and I'm asking Peter and Travis and Claude to meet with you about, you know, the list of concerns that you have, so that, you know, we're not applying Band-Aids, but it's not something that we're going to resolve this afternoon. So if you, you know, if you will, you know, give us some forbearance, and we try to do that. I also am going to be specifically asking the same individuals, and, you know, I'm going to ask Richie Hunter to join as a female to meet with the young woman who had the concern about the Muslim students and their security and comfort here. So because we want to be able to kind of boil it down to things that we can realistically do. Okay? Are there other questions, please?
Thank you so much for organizing this. I had a quick question about research. You mentioned a lot of initiatives to start advancing the institute's research. As a student who's interested in going into academia and potentially changing the world one day, I want, I was wondering-
Good.
I was wondering if there's any plans in place to have partnerships with National Labs or other research institutions? Because going through ARCH, I'm looking for research away for my away semesters, and having a bit of trouble finding these connections to make. And I feel like partnerships with National Labs and other research institutions would be strong, not only with ARCH, but also as a greater research.
Okay, let me let, shall I put you on the spot, Provost? And then where's Robert? Okay, Robert, you'll have 30 seconds to think of your answer.
So as part of the developing a rich portfolio of opportunities for our students, we are certainly reaching out to the research labs to try and get ARCH opportunities. But beyond that, places like the Los Alamos Laboratories and so on, they have actually expressed an interest in working with us to develop partnerships, larger partnerships. I think they are here next week. Shekhar, do you want to speak to that issue?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, please. Go ahead.
So thank you for your question. You know, there are a number of collaborations that our faculty have with National Labs, and we're trying to grow them. I just want to give a shout out to Sandier Lab, who are, people from there are visiting on 4th of April, and we are trying to get a meeting with students from 2:00 to 3:00 so that you understand what they do. They're growing tremendously, and they need, they want our students, they want bright students. But we have collaborations with LLNL, Los Alamos National Lab, and many others, and I'm happy to put you in touch with those. Yep.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the question. Just make sure, yeah, I'm looking at the right person, that's great. So we are developing a number of programs to prepare for research opportunities away for the ARCH. You heard Dean Garda talk about the collaborations with Sandier. We're developing programs with companies such as Corning and Trumpf and others. One thing I might advise anybody in this room who is considering research as the ARCH away opportunity, is get into faculty laboratories here as early as possible. Because the single most possible, most powerful tool we can offer you is if we know you, we know that you're capable of great things and enthusiastic and passionate about research, those individual references are the most powerful tool we can provide. And, you know, we will work with any student who is looking for that opportunity to work in faculty labs here as preparation for that ARCH away. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, please.
If I had a question about the ARCH specifically pertaining to finances-
Did you ask the question before?
I did not.
Okay. Just checking.
How is the institute working to help families that may not be able to handle the financial burden of three or even four consecutive academic semesters due to the experience with the ARCH?
Well, I think what we've done in the financial aid arena, in fact, is meant to take care of that. Because any semester that a student spends here on campus counts as part of a normal academic semester, and I think we've worked out those arrangements. John Wexler, you want to say?
Hi. So in regards to the ARCH, when students start in the summer, it is the equivalent of them when they would start in the fall. So any financial aid they're getting at the institution would be the same. And then the term they're away, they're not registered as a student, and then the term they're back on campus, so it'd continue through. I think where you're going with that is four consecutive or three consecutive terms?
Yes, so specifically working with government aid and when grants, when loans are given out and dispersed with, if you have to go for, if you're going away in the spring semester or your junior year and have to attend for spring, summer, and then fall in one calendar year?
Mm-hmm. Well, going back, so the government aid that you'd be getting, you'd be getting it in the summer when you're here, and then going through, and then, so you would get it the same two terms as you would in your sophomore year, and you would get it in your senior year.
So what he's saying is, if you went in the summer and the fall, so that would be the four consecutive terms, you'd be getting it through your sophomore year, you'd get it in the summer, and you'd get it in the fall. We've worked out those arrangements relative to that. Is that correct, John?
That is correct.
Right. Please, there was a young lady up here.
Sorry, I had to run down here and ask you a question. I'm actually Emily Sticklikis. I am the Vice President of Active Minds, which is our mental health awareness club here on campus. So I know it's already been brought up, but I wanted to say that we're also available for anything that students may need here on campus at any point in time. But what I specifically wanted to inquire about was potentially advertising more openly and obviously anonymous feedback forums in both the Health Center and the Counseling Center. Because while I have had a great amount of success when it comes to reaching out and making known my feelings about all different situations on campus, courtesy of both Dean Abgar and Keith Anderson in the Counseling Center, there are many students on campus who struggle to communicate in such an open and blatant way and kind of a non-anonymous way as well. So I was wondering if that would potentially be something that you're working towards or working forwards to allowing more students to have their anonymous feedback heard.
Okay, Peter?
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, is our survey currently live? So this is just an example of a partnership between the institute and students. There is a live student survey right now to give us feedback on medical and mental health services, and we value that partnership because we value that feedback. It is anonymous, but we also are open to the direct feedback if you have a question and you want to come in. And Emily, we really appreciate your advocacy around mental health. It's what is helping us reduce stigma around that issue, so thank you.
Right. Let me reinforce something that Peter said. We really do want to reduce any stigma around it. I think what you've suggested and what we've already begun, I think is a good step along that way, because I do understand that not everyone feels comfortable talking, you know, in an open way. But I would also urge you to help us and urge students to come in if they have very specific issues, because we're only here to try to help in that regard. And if there's a specific need or a specific intervention that a student needs, the only way we're going to know about it is to be able to talk directly with that student. So I think we can work along both of those pathways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Have you asked a question before? No? Okay. I can't see you in all the bright lights here.
As a follow-up to Adam's question about the ARCH and partnership programs, why did you not develop these partnerships before requiring mandatory ARCH?
Well, we've been working on them all the time, but let me let Michelle, you want to talk to that, Michelle, or Peter?
We'll talk to you. I think, we gave a statistic, which I think in the presentation, there's more than 1,400 partnerships with more than 250 organizations, and that continues to grow. And I'm actually just going to ask our team, because I know they're spread throughout, if you're on our employer relations team, will you just wave your hands? I know we have a few over here. So we have four or five people who are doing that work- So we have four or five people who are doing that work extensively with nonprofits, public service, corporations, in every, to find appropriate opportunities in every school and in every field. So we're working with the deans, and we're working to identify them, we're working with our alumni, we're working with our parents, and we're working with people who come upon us and say, you know, we'd be interested. We see something on LinkedIn, we see something, you know, through a posting, or they come to one of our events, and we then approach them around Arch. So we're really ramping up, and the goal is to have that personalized individual attention. So if you're a sophomore, we want you to come across and talk with us, talk with our CCPD staff. We'll talk to you about research, we'll talk to you about civic engagement, we'll talk to you about co-op or internships, we'll even talk to you about study abroad and then refer you to those experts on campus. But the goal is to make sure every sophomore in the room, this is advertising for you and for all of your friends, come in and talk, and let us help work with you on that, kind of personalize and individual attention, so.
So let me say something, because you've raised an important point. So I would say a couple of things. One, we didn't just start looking for a number of these positions. There are situations where a number of companies are used to hiring students on a usual kind of cycle of in the summertime, but not necessarily doing it in a co-op type of way. And so, so that's what we've really ramped up, but we've also had to spend time with companies, getting them to move in the direction of not just doing a summer internship, but to do an actual semester-based co-op. Secondly, you know, we've had to expand broadly in order to cover all the schools, the range of positions. We spend a lot of time talking about corporations, but as a gentleman asked earlier who was interested in academia and research, there are some unique types of positions that come through faculty references, and to have students interface and become known to faculty in order to land those positions. So all of those things are going on, and as we go on, we expect this to accelerate, not just because we're accelerating our efforts, but as people become more aware of what we're trying to do. So, but thank you, it's an important question. Yes, please.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So recently, a special meeting of the Rensselaer Alumni Association was held where the attending members ruled the most recent elections invalid and elected a new temporary board to run in new elections. Can you discuss RPI's stance on these events and how they'll work with the Alumni Association to ensure a resolution?
I think that's a question for Craig Easton to answer.
So, yes, a meeting did occur, and we actually, Kareem will actually be putting out a report in the coming week or so to exactly what the next steps will be. But we are supporting the RIA and their initiatives as we move forward as an institution.
Other questions? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Natalie, and I'm in the Architecture Program here. So regarding Arch, many architecture students feel as if it was designed without us in mind at all. And we were just wondering, out of those 1,400-plus partnerships, how many are with architecture firms? And also, currently, there's no core classes for architecture provided in the summer besides studio, which does not fit the 12 minimum requirements, so we're just wondering about that.
So let me ask the Dean of the School of Architecture to address that.
Well, we have been part of the discussion from the start. We have, in terms of the course curriculum, we have a design studio in the summer. All the other courses are Haas courses. We certainly think it's a great opportunity. We'll have MOU agreements with top firms around the world. We see it as an extraordinary career development initiative for all you guys. And it's an opportunity, it's not a burden. It's a way to broaden your education and to have access to practical, applied knowledge in firms so you can become leaders in the profession. If you have any questions, feel free to come to the dean's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions here? If I'm not seeing you, give a shout out. Where are you?
Somewhere up here at the top. We're feeling we spring a lot faster up here.
Okay, I don't see any flowers yet, though. Oh, you're the flower. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wondered how President Trump's Freedom of Speech Act affects RPI's freedom of speech policy.
Well, we're in the process of digesting what it is. It was actually not that very specific, but we always welcome a range of opinion being expressed here. But what we don't tolerate is hate speech, incitement to violence, things that create harassment and intimidation for members of our community, especially our students. And so we have not changed, you know, in that regard. Please. And then I'll take one more question after this.
I just want to thank you all so much for your time. My name is Emmanuel Giardino, and I just have a question on, oh, geez.
Take your time.
This is regarding, oh, man. I apologize, I'm, I'm like...
Well, I tell you what, let me take one more question, and I'm going to come back to you, and you can close it out for us. Is there any other question? Yes, up there, yes.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Riley, I'm a transfer student here. On the topic of alcohol, it would not be any exceptions made for cooking wine, because I oftentimes cook for myself.
You know what, I'm going to let you talk to the dean of students about that. I'm not going there.
I've got a real easy answer, Dr. Jackson. As long as you invite us to dinner. Actually, you know, the reality is that if it's in an appropriate place and it's used for those purposes, similar to things like vanilla extract, obviously, we're talking about things that...
Yeah, just cooking wine, you're going to cook the alcohol out of it anyway, so. Please. No problem.
So this is in regards to the delay of communications that the student body received for the allegations of the student with a firearm on campus?
There was no firearm on campus. Let's be clear. There was never a firearm on campus.
Okay, but there was stated that, it was stated that this was, was, oh my, geez, I'm sorry. That all these allegations were found like March 19th.
Fourteenth.
And we're just, 14th, and we're just receiving communications now that, about it. As the student body and as parents of people who are, who attend at RPI, do you have any comments?
Let me let the Director of Public Safety speak to the dean.
Hello, how are you? So, these events took place on April 14th.
No, March 14th.
I'm sorry. I'm thinking ahead. I'm thinking ahead.
I hope not.
All right, everybody relax now, that's very good, all right. So, March 14th is when these events took place. These events took place under the leadership of outside federal law enforcement. We were in a assistant, you know, capacity, working with them. And oftentimes, when these things happen, these things have to run their course, from a point of view of law and from a point of view of the investigation continuing through. Oftentimes, in this event, as a number of other events, we really are not free to put forward information out to anyone regarding, until we are given the, basically, the clearance from the investigative agencies about what happened and what we can say. Now, having said all that, I'll say this, that if we feel that there is an imminent threat to the safety of this campus, to this community, we will put something out immediately. In this instance, there was no imminent threat. This individual who was involved in certain activities, the minute he came to the attention of law enforcement and to us, he could no longer cause any kind of a threat to this community. He was never, from the minute he came to our attention, was never, again, alone without being accompanied by people in law enforcement. So there was really no imminent threat to the community, and that's why there was no clearly alert warning put out to the community regarding this event. And we had to wait until we got the, you know, the go-ahead and the clearance from the agencies that were conducting the investigation to provide the information. That's why that's it.
You know, it's an important consideration, and in these days and times, I realize everyone would like to know everything about, you know, what they hear, particularly something where people think there may have been a danger to the campus. The real point here is that there was a prevention of danger to the campus. And because of what Mr. Thomas has said, it was not the kind of thing where we would just put out a notice. There are any number of things that are headed off, you could call it that here, that we don't necessarily put out notices about. But it's our responsibility, if we feel or know that there is an imminent threat to the campus, that we will put out those notices. And for those of you who've been here for a longer time, you know that there have been instances where we've done just that and locked down the campus and so forth. And so, so that's where we stand. We don't want to just put out a notice about everything, but because of the misunderstandings and misinformation that had begun to propagate, we put out a notice the other day. But maybe I'll ask our general counsel to speak to some of this.
Know that, I'm a curious person, and I know that a lot of people want to know all the details, right? And the fact of the matter is, in many of these situations, we're just not going to be able to provide details. There's federal laws that we have to comply with to ensure privacy, and we comply with those laws. But as Dr. Jackson has said, and as Mr. Thomas has said, anytime there is an imminent direct threat to the campus where providing communication to the students, to the faculty, to the staff will allow them to take precautions, we do make that, we do go out with that. And we don't, we're not going to give you all the details, even in those situations. We're going to give you the information you need, and we feel you need, to take the precautions you need to take. And we do that, we comply with the law, we comply with our policy, and we, overall, do that to make the campus safe.
Thank you. So let me thank all of you for coming out and spending, you know, a good portion of your afternoon. And I want to thank you for the thoughtful questions, and we've taken them to heart. And those things that I've asked people to follow up on, we will follow up on. And, and again, thank you for your attention and for your courtesy. Have a great afternoon.